Good morning, everyone. This time I'll call the May 2 meeting of the County Board of Commissioners to order, and I will ask Commissioner Matthews to lead us in the pledge and the invocation.
Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we do thank you for this opportunity we have to be here today. We thank you for the beautiful day. Thank you for those who are in attendance to be here to help as we move through discussions regarding our county and the direction that we would take. We pray for each of the commissioners and for the county staff that are here, Father, that you would direct us in the path that you would have us to take. We thank you for our county, for our state, and for our nation, and we pray your blessing on those entities and on us as citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. Now, we've got a full agenda today, so we'll get right to it. Are there any additions or deletions to the public agenda? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Any questions about any items on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. One thing we need to do that's not on the agenda. I got a call this morning from Commissioner McCoy. He's having some family issues. I'll entertain a motion to excuse her absence today.
Who moved?
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carried. All right. At this time, we will move to the public comment period. Each person will have three minutes for a total of 30 minutes. We ask that each speaker maintain proper order and make your comments in a civil manner. Personal attacks and use of profanity is prohibited. Ask you to limit your comments to items that are under the board's jurisdiction. If it's not something that we have authority over, then we don't need to discuss it. At this time, Ms. Waite?
Yes.
Ms. Waite, please state your address and your frequency.
My name is Kelly Waite, 2724 Olivia Road in the Western Harnett. So, good morning. This is my third visit to the board to discuss ongoing mental health and substance abuse concerns in this county. As a mental health clinician, I'm here to advocate for everyone that's experiencing issues with substance abuse or mental health co-occurring. With at least half of our officer-related shootings in this state involving mental health or substance abuse, it is concerning that this county continues to support policy to police mental health. A county crisis plan was developed and signed by stakeholders in 2019 as required by state law. The plan calls for unmarked police cars, civilian clothes for officers, same-gender officers, crisis de-escalation training, and alternative transportation plans. However, citizens are being stormed by law enforcement with guns drawn to complete involuntary commitment orders. They're arriving at Betsy Johnson Hospital traumatized, where they are boarded for weeks, for days or weeks, waiting for release or a mental health bed. And I need to be clear, because I've seen this with my own eyes, we're talking about children under the age of 10, sitting in an emergency department behind glass walls for days, alone, without a support system, without parents, waiting to be transferred to a bed. And that is just wrong. It shouldn't happen. There's no mental health treatment in there, no one to talk to, it's just grief and despair. We see it in our jails with our inmates are dying from lack of medical care during drug withdrawals. Between 2019 and September 2021, there were nearly 3,000 involuntary commitments in this county. If you look at the entire population of this county, I mean, that can approach up to 2% of our entire population. This is like a 90% increase, you know, over the last 10 years in involuntary use of involuntary commitments. And Harnett County is on track to way exceed the average for the state. We don't want to regress to a time where, you know, husbands can lock up their wives for sheer inconvenience, right? Like, we want to move forward, and we want to bring this into our motion, and we want to talk about having appropriate services in our county. We do not have enough resources. My agency has attempted credentialing with Sandhills LME for five years. We're told our network is full, okay? But we don't have one inpatient substance abuse treatment facility in this county. We do not have one. Well, we have one. Good hope maybe 16 beds or so. Maybe they're going up to 20 by now, I don't know. It's not meeting the need. We need assertive community treatments. We need people on the ground to go out and see people, you know, homeless kids, to see people, to engage with them, try harm reduction strategies. We need to find real solutions. Regarding funding, I am concerned. We have $6 million coming in for substance abuse treatment. Yet, on page 142 of the current year's budget, it is stated that the Drug Treatment Court Officer requested funding for substance abuse treatment, but the commission denied it, stating that we want to use our community resources, not the county money, to fund treatment. So I'm concerned, like, I don't know where this money's going to be divided, I don't know where it's going to be filtered. But we need to look at this, because we need real solutions. Thank you.
Please state your address.
Corbett, 316 Word Church Lane, Lillington. I'm here about the appraisals, the new appraisal, tax appraisals. And the road, 316, or Word Church Lane, is a private road, and it's in bad shape, and it's been in bad shape since it's been there. The state says they won't fix it because the county put the water line down the middle of the road, and the county says they won't do nothing with it. So we're just screwed. And yet, they've raised our taxes, triple mine, this appraisal. And I just don't understand. And I know y'all are the last defense on this, how much you're going to set, what we're going to pay. And I just hope you can understand, people can't pay this. They have tripled our taxes. I don't know how. I don't know how they figured it. Thank you.
Mr. Corbett, there is a procedure if you would like to appeal the evaluation or the valuation of your property. If you're not...
The deadline has passed, though.
Oh, the deadline's passed? Okay. Sorry about that.
Let me tell you, I turned in some paperwork Thursday.
Should be good news.
I got Thursday night, I found out that I was supposed to come in and sign some more papers, or fill out some more papers. Come in Friday, they said it was too late. Try it next year.
How you guys doing? My name is Jose Perez. I'm, uh, I live at 288 Word Church Lane. Same problem. I went from $97 last year to $190 this year. When I get any service on the road, and I understand that the state is supposed to take care of the road from Doc's Road to the power lines. They took care of the other side of the road, but outside of the road, they just disvalued it, and we haven't gotten nothing out of it. So, the dirt road's been there. I've been in that spot since 1989, ex-military, and I haven't seen nothing done about the road. But, all of a sudden now, we're paying, we've been assessed at $190, and there's nothing changed. So I'm just wondering how they're doing this assessment from $97 to $190 from one year to the next, and nothing's changed. So, yeah, and I found out about the form when he told me about it, Mr. Corbett. And I was wondering, you know, because there was nothing in the paperwork that says to go fill out a form. It just said to go ahead and take pictures and, you know, send in a letter or whatever about the problem, and couldn't find out now there's a form involved. So, I didn't get the word, and I understand that, you know, taxes has got to go up, but that's crazy, from $97 to $190. And I just wonder who's assessing these properties? It's a double Y on three acres. Nothing's changed. So I'm wondering, are they using the golf course has a dog on, or comps? Or are they using the two neighborhoods that they just threw up on Doc's Road? And we're far away from them, both of them. So, if there's anything that we can do, or anywhere that we can go to find out what we can do about that, or somebody's ear that we can bend, it would be nice. But nothing's changed since 1989. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Ms. Kemp?
My name is Ronnie Kemp. My address is 244 Chesley Lane in Lillington. I'm going to walk you through a very common scenario that will shed some light on the problems our county animal shelter is currently experiencing, and the burden those problems are putting back onto the citizens. You quickly stop at Carly Sea's for lunch to grab a few things from the store. As you leave, you see a dog wandering through the parking lot looking lost. It's hot outside, so you do the right thing, and offer her some water and check to see if she has a tag. She's wearing a collar but no tag. She's friendly and being a good person, you feel compelled to get her home safely to the family you imagine missing her. After all, if this was your dog, you would hope a good Samaritan would do the same thing. You call Animal Services for help, but no one answers the phone. You leave a message, you wait, nothing happens, you call back. This time, you get lucky, and someone answers. You explain the situation, this dog is lost, and you're trying to help. Expecting an invitation to bring her into the shelter, you're shocked when the staff member lays out the following three options. You can let the dog go. You can hold on to the dog yourself because our shelter is full. And they might even explain that it's illegal to pick up a dog because Harnett County doesn't have a leash law. You, being the good citizen, are now unfairly burdened with determining the fate of this dog. You have little to no time to decide whether to accept full responsibility for a dog you know little about, or you can choose to do nothing and watch helplessly as it risks being hit by a car. The entire time, you think about the family that may be missing her, and you put yourself in their shoes. It's gut-wrenching, and it's unfair. This situation plays itself out dozens of times every week in one form or another. Dogs are recklessly being turned loose or abandoned. Our shelter is flooded with calls and pleas to pick them up. When they can't, because our shelter is full, it makes the good citizens of this community angry and frustrated. It portrays Animal Services as heartless and unhelpful when in fact they're under-resourced. This approach is not serving our shelter, our community, or the animals well. You see, the one thing we don't have is a good citizen problem. We have a stray dog problem, an entirely correctable stray dog problem. I think everyone in this room agrees we need to remedy the space issue at the shelter, but we also need to stop the continuous cycle of stray animals, which can only be done through a spay-and-neuter program. A quick Google search finds that New Hanover County, Orange County, and Moore County all have published plans, some of which add no cost to taxpayers, reduce overpopulation, shelter intakes, and euthanasia rates, all using spay-and-neuter services. These plans are available online with their implementation steps. I ask, where is our plan? Every cat or dog in Harnett County that is unsterilized can be expected to produce between 12 and 20 offspring every year. Using that number as a guide, we can estimate just the animals adopted from our shelters... Using that number as a guide, we can estimate just the animals adopted from our shelter, unfixed, have the potential to add another 6,000 to 10,000 pets into our community. We have a giant problem. We aren't going to adopt our way out of this, and adding shelter space that will only fill up isn't going to do it either. Again, we can fix this, but we have to start by fixing more animals. I'm asking again for the creation of a Citizens Advisory Board to help develop a strategic plan for Animal Services in Harnett County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Elizabeth Longman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bonneville. Just coming here to talk about the mental health, and we need more mental health services and mental health response in Harnett County. My family has suffered greatly because of the lack of mental health services. In fact, to this point, we don't even call 911 anymore. It's not a trusted service. And I don't think, you know, waiting over two hours for a mental health crisis call is worth the effort. We better just wait to our own devices. We need the supports put in place. If there is money available to fund these supports, please go ahead and do it. Those opioid crises and all that, those are people trying to self-medicate through a mental health crisis most of the time. We have seen so many people who just opt to try and numb their own selves because you cannot get access to a psychiatrist, really, in Harnett County. Whatever services can be put in place, please make all effort for the good of all the citizens of Harnett County. If we are all working on our mental health, at whatever level of intensity we need to work on it, because we all have issues we need to work on, we can all be better people in this world. And I hope that you go ahead and give mental health the attention it needs in the budget, and not just throw things to the side, or ignore, or assume, when you say community services, that those community services exist, because they don't. They may exist for certain situations, but not for other situations. And we really, really, really need mental health services, improvement and access to mental health services within the county lines. I shouldn't have to go to Cumberland County or to Wake County to get adequate mental health services. If Harnett County is growing so much, with so much population explosion, with so much more taxes coming into the coffers, please make sure that you have mental health services fully funded in this upcoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longman.
Yes, I'm Alan Longman, 234 Hamilton Road, Bonneville. Like she said, saying the mental health, we talked to Jim Bergen about it. He thinks they're being enforced here. We have to keep telling him that the sheriff's not doing what he promised, and that they're not being enforced the way he metwoked the laws in the legislature. So he wants this done because it saves money, not just for the county but for the state. And he figured out how much it was, it was an enormous amount of money. The real reason why I'm up here is because I went to court the other day, it's about your legal department, basically. Went to court, Judge Webb was the judge, and it was against contempt of court case. The thing that bothered me about the contempt of court case was the fact that the judge took over cases on all three sides. And then, when he started to lose the case, we made all four points. And then he turned around and he just made a decision, just put in what you want to be the reason for why it's denied. I think that Harnett County has bad DA and the Sheriff's Department are working together, but more than that, I'm finding out that so is the judicial. And I think that everyone has to go out and get outside the county to have these court cases heard in order for there to be justice. Also, the fact that the information, even though Chris had, Chris had the lawyer for it, Chris had the information in his computer about other cases. If he's being charged, the same charge as everyone else, how is he able to have the evidence on his computer? And why is he able to have it there? I think it's a conflict of interest. And I think the restrictions placed on that are in there prevents due process. I don't think it's legal. I think, again, it needs to go through a higher court. What I'd like to see from the Law Department is that they change the leadership that's in the Law Department, because it's more than just unethical. It's that you do anything to get out of paying people that have been injured. And I think this is not the right way. I think they have the right to be compensated, and that the parameters that you have are unethical in the way in which you do it. And I think it needs to be changed. I think you have open-ended liability on certain individuals by what they do, but you don't take the process of eliminating their employment so that you don't have the liabilities to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman.
Angela Scarborough, also known as She's Got Problems, from somewhere in Harnett County. Why is it that when others raise their voice, whether it be with passion, anger, or concern, you thank them by name at the end of their three minutes? Yet, the last time I was here, I raised my voice for a very good reason, and you announce to the world, she's got problems. Why would someone do that? I'll answer that for you. Because you've been caught. And it's easier to make your audience believe that she's crazy than accept responsibility of this horrific act that has occurred. Transparency and truth mean very little to you all sitting up there. The Sheriff's Department has been caught tampering with evidence to cover up an inhumane, torturous act committed by Corporal Dawson, Officer Jackson. I've since learned that the board had knowledge of what occurred for quite some time. Each one of you are supposedly up there for the best interests of Harnett County citizens, yet each one of you sit there month after month, listening to all the injustices that have occurred within the county, and with the sheriff's office, and all the people who have suffered under Wayne Coats's administration. And the only thing that was said by Matt Nicole is he's an elected official and he can be voted out, placing responsibility on unknowing, blind voters. How about this? Stop telling the people you are working for them and show them. I challenge you to suspend Coats and get the FBI here to investigate all the crimes occurring within the sheriff's office. The FBI is well aware of what has taken place, because I've been in contact with them for three years, last time in March, and many others have been as well. The only way you can get the FBI here is if the sheriff or the DA request it. Well, if you're corrupt, you're not going to request the FBI to come investigate your own crimes. So I was talking to many lawyers outside Wake, Moore, and in fact, it is up to you guys, right here. The responsibility lies on you. When you know corruption is occurring and you hear it month after month, it is up to you. You have the ability to suspend the sheriff. Ask the FBI to come in. You're not doing it. Why is that? Makes no sense. She's got problems. Imagine leaving an emotionally, financially, and mentally abusive marriage, and continue another two years with the help of Harnett County Court System and Sheriff's Department to continue the abuse. Imagine you're finally divorced, looking forward to your future, teaching, writing a book, training with the North Carolina Coalition for Domestic Violence with the goal to adopt a Tennessee law to prohibit abusers from weaponizing the court system to abuse. And imagine trying to finish up, and finishing up a doctor degree. Be exciting, right? Should be, until I was falsely arrested and doused with the pepper spray and left with brain damage. Imagine spending the next two years thinking that it was all PTSD, and trying to get answers from Harnett County, but they're not giving it to you. And you're blaming yourself because you can't get a hold of yourself, and you're a mental health counselor. You have severe PTSD, you think all your anxiety, all your breathing issues are from PTSD. You think all that, and then, a year ago, somebody from the Harnett County Sheriff says, "Check out your medical records." And it wasn't PTSD. It was medical issues. Medical issues from being dealt with pepper spray injuring me internally, having hypoxic brain angere. Imagine trying to write a book and you can't do any of that now.
Thank you, Ms. Scarborough.
Thank you.
Ms. Pitkin?
Hi, my name is Linda Sunderman, 25 Spruce Lane, Lillington, North Carolina, 27546. I have a couple things, so I'll make it really quick. I was going to speak on what Angela did about, I had to watch the meeting last month online, and when a certain commissioner said, "You'll have to excuse her, she has problems," I thought I was going to fall off the chair. We pay you all, and there you are calling a taxpayer names. I thought I was seeing things. Anyways, that's unethical, and there should be an apology, in my opinion. Second of all, mental health, there is a major, major problem in Harnett County, and my family is one dealing with it. I would like to see the ACTS program available in Harnett County, and not that you have to go to other counties in order to find somebody that will help you, help somebody that can't even get off the couch and leave the house. You know, and with Naomi, Judge is dying, and she said in an interview a couple years ago, she spent two years on her couch, not even getting out of her PJs because of mental health. It is real. And when you deal with it every day with someone in your house, it's terrible. It is just terrible. And when you try to get help and you can't, it's just, anyways, it's terrible. The third thing, and this is it, I came before and talked about the elect Wayne Coats page as the county page that does the news releases, does the, you know, the people who are wanted and all. And I would like to know, I think the person that actually runs that page is here right now, right at the back door, and maybe he could speak to how he publicly, at a meeting I was at, said how, "Well, we did that instead of the other page, because then those John Livingston people can't comment on the page, and this way we can block people." I'm one of the blocked people. If you want to see something, a friend will screenshot it and send it to you, so you know what's happening in the county. That is wrong, and that is illegal. That is totally illegal. Even Donald Trump got caught with it on his old Twitter stuff, banning people from seeing his Twitter and commenting, and he was made to not do that anymore. So it is illegal. It's publicly known all over the United States that that's illegal, and it needs to stop. There is many, many, many of us that are blocked because of who we know and what. Mine was because I was rooting for Harry Ennis the last time. And they scanned the comments, and I even had a deputy message me, because we were friends, and say, "How could you not support my boss? Do you know what you're doing?" And needless to say, three dispatcher friends had to get rid of me, she had to get rid of me, fire friends had to get rid of me, which I'm a fire family, all because I was rooting for Harry Ennis. That's wrong. That is just wrong, that they should attack you for who you're voting for. Anyways, that's the end of what I have to say. Thank you for listening, and I'm waiting for the public apology for poor Angela. That was just beyond words. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to appointments. I believe we have some appointments. Is that correct, Commissioner Johnson?
On the agenda for appointments, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Rose Ferguson, who has applied for Harnett County Planning Board. Also, on the Harnett County Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Anthony DiMarzio for a second term, and also remove Cassie Taylor for inactivity, for the community representatives.
Okay, we have a motion and a second concerning these appointments. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving these appointments, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carried. All right, at this time, Ms. Witt, would you like to come forward and talk about
Good morning. I'm Victoria Witt. I'm the CEO of Sandhills Center. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. You may remember the last time I was here was back in October, at which time I talked with you about two additional counties petitioning to join Sandhills Center. That was Davidson County and Rockingham County. I'm happy to report that as of December 1st, both Rockingham and Davidson County have joined Sandhills Center, so we are now an 11-county catchment area. Also happy to say that all of the work that has needed to be done to get those counties transferred from Cardinal Innovations to Sandhills has occurred, including the funding. The funding for Davidson and Rockingham County did follow them to Sandhills Center, and that's both the county Medicaid and state dollars. So no need to be concerned that the dollars that were in the system are having to go to support additional counties, because those counties did bring the funding with them. So thank you for your support and help with that back in October, and very happy to report that was successful. My main reason for being here this morning, you know, every year I come before you to put in our general, our funding, county general funding request. Our board met March the 8th, and for the 18th year in a row, decided to hold the county funding level at the same level. So I'm coming before you today to request, in your budget, $199,679. That's the same amount that it has been for years. As you go through your budget process, I hope you will see fit to continue that funding. I'll remind you that all of that funding stays right here in Harnett County, as it does with our other 10 counties. We'll remind you also that the reason we have been able to maintain the county funding and not go up is because, you will remember, in 2012, we took over the management of Medicaid. Part of our agreement with the federal government is that as we manage Medicaid dollars, if they're savings, we keep the savings to reinvest back into the community. So, just to highlight a few things that we have done with the savings here in Harnett County, we continue to support the Veterans Treatment Court, which I know all of you are very familiar with. We have funded them for a couple of years and anticipate that funding continuing. We also work with the county and Wake Enterprises to fund a day program here for individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities. And we have been a partner with Good Hope Hospital. They have recently added 16 beds to the 16 that they had waiting on the state to get the final approval. And I understand, thanks to Senator Bergen, additional funds have been identified for Good Hope Hospital that will be working with the state in Good Hope to get additional beds. And I understand from a conversation with Senator Bergen on Friday, some additional funds for child services, crisis services, will be coming into Harnett County. So we take this opportunity to remind you and the county manager and county staff that this is the time of year that as we look at the needs, we are happy and willing to talk with you about special mental health, behavioral health, substance abuse needs here in the county. In your report also is our annual report, both our quarterly report and the annual report. And then lastly, every time I come before you, I remind you about Medicaid transformation. That is still happening. This is the Medicaid Transformation Plan at the state that will move some behavioral health services away from Sandhills Center to private, for-profit plans. That did occur July 1st of this year, so it's not unusual now for you to hear about other insurance companies that are managing Medicaid dollars for behavioral health. A little bit of confusion in the system as things kind of iron out with that, but we remain here to help you and your citizens navigate the system. I will stop there. There's a lot of material in those two reports. There's a lot of material in those two reports, but in the interest of time, I will stop there and see if you have any questions for me, either about the budget request or anything else.
Any questions for Ms. Witt? I think we're good. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'll call on the US Forest Service to do their annual report. Mr. Pullman?
Good morning. Thanks for this opportunity to come and give an update about what the Forest Service has been up to in Harnett County throughout 2021, and also our proposed budget for this coming up year. I'm gonna start with a little bit of economic indicators of how the Harnett County is doing, and this is from a forest ranger's perspective. Forest rangers look at the burning barrel index, economic index, burning barrels in 2011 in Western Harnet were $10. By 2016, they had went up to $15. 2021, they're $20 apiece. However, now they offer free delivery, but we consider that as inflation. So, but forest economics is very important to the state of North Carolina. The wood product industry in North Carolina is the second largest manufacturer in the state, employs about 70,000 people across the state. So the forest product industry is certainly alive and well in North Carolina and in Harnett County. One of my builder friends that I see a lot of times at lunch last year made this comment, a comment to me, and I have to, he was talking about the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And in 2021, if you talk to any builders, that pot of gold at the end of the rainbow was a pile of lumber. Lumber prices have went up tremendously in the last two years. Of course, that is great for the forest product industry in North Carolina, because that makes it very healthy. I show this slide about every time I come in here, and it looks at the different companies that the wood that comes out of Harnett County go to, and you can see a list of them on the left. But in the last few years, we've had several new manufacturers come into the state. Up in the Pacific Northwest, Roseburg is a large timber company. Back in 2019, they made a large land acquisition in this eastern North Carolina, kind of left a lot of people in the forest product industry wondering what was going on. Well, last July, Governor Cooper made the announcement that Roseburg was putting in a large sawmill in Halifax County. Now Halifax County is a couple of counties away from Harnett County, but most of the town, you see logs on log trucks. It is not uncommon for them to travel 100 to 150 miles to that facility to, to be turned into the products that we use every day. So there will be wood. It will certainly benefit landowners, forest landowners here in Harnett County, that these new mills are showing up. So we're, we're real excited about that. Provides a lot of competition, and of course, that helps timber prices come up, and we help landowners grow trees to one-day harvest. One of our major jobs is forest protection here in the county, and of course, we're known for, for Smokey the Bear and stomping out forest fires, but there's a lot of other things that we protect in our forest. And I've showed this slide right here a few times over the last years, and we've seen how the colors have been starting to come to Harnett County, and this is invasive insects. And the emerald ash borer, last year at this time, we had some traps set up on the Cape Fear River, because we had found a lot of dead ash trees. And then last summer, after we sent off our specimens, we did confirm that the, the emerald ash borer was here. If you look at that graph, some of the counties, Cumberland and Sampson to the south of us, with the Asian Ambrosia beetle. And I expect that that will move into the county this year, too. And these insects, you know, we really can't control them, they're gonna have to go through their life cycle, and they're gonna take certain species out of our forest that's gonna take a long time for them to return. And that's some of the things that are, are really scary about some of the invasives that are out there. This is a picture of some of the traps that we put up along the Cape Fear River last year to, to catch the, the emerald ash borer. Now, all invasive species out there, just not insects. One of the, they can also be plants. And throughout the 70s and the 80s and the early 90s, there was a tree called the Bradford pear that was very common planted in yards. In fact, I planted one in, in my yard when we bought our house back in the late 90s. But Bradford pears have also become invasive. This year, you may have caught a couple blurbs on the news where some counties were putting out bounties for Bradford pears. And basically, what we were doing was trying to say, hey, if you cut your Bradford pear down, and you document it, that they will give you a native tree to, to plant. And the Forest Service, along with the Cooperative Extension Office, Tim Matthews here in the county, we're, we're starting to talk about, maybe seeing if we could do something like that next winter to, to try to get rid of some of these Bradford pears. I had one in my yard. Hurricane Matthew took it out in 2016. I cut it up, drug it to the backside of my property, and chucked it out of the trailer. Two years ago, I went down there, and I had all kinds of Bradford pears coming up. That's a bad thing, but we, we did take care of it. They, they have been eradicated. They have been eradicated. So, like I said, invasives take all different kinds of forms. Back in 2014, I mentioned this invasive critter that was on his way. The Georgia Department of Environment and Natural Resources had put out a, a statement concerning the Argentina Teig lizard that was coming out of Florida into Georgia. Well, just in the last month, I snapped these on my phone from Fox News in South Carolina, that they are now concerned about the Argentina Teig lizard showing up in South Carolina. So we know we're right to the north of that. I will probably be retired by the time it gets to Harnett County, but I'm sure y'all are gonna have a meeting about that. About three to four foot long lizards, that, that can be a problem. So invasives can take all different kinds of, of forms, insects, plants, and animals. 2021, our fire, Smokey the Bear, fire activity certainly picked up in 2021. We had several years of really wet fire seasons, which are normally from November to about mid-May. We, lots of wet winters, but this year, 2021, it kind of dried out. We had 182 wildfires that the Forest Service responded to with the, with the fire departments in the county that burnt 383 acres. We had two burn bans, one back in May and one in December. Burn ban is a prevention tool. You put those in place when you have a lot of fires occurring, and normally, through research, we show that the, the fire numbers drop during burn bans. Now, the calls to the fire departments and to the Forest Service for people burning during the burn bans obviously picks up, but your overall, your fire occurrence drops. I also have a map up here of the Bowie Road Fire. That was the largest fire that occurred in 2021 in Harnett County, kind of near Western Harnett High School. It was burnt about 53 acres, started off, off a power line down there. With some of these fires in the county, we do investigate and figure out how they started. Our division has a forest law enforcement branch that we can bring in. Some fires require a little more investigation. It's just not the burn barrel that the fire gets out. It's pretty easy to, to figure that one out, but we do have some that either do a lot of property damage involving some type of maybe arson or repeat offender type stuff. And then we do have some fires that have had fatalities, and this is a picture of one from 2000, from March of this year, and we brought in that forest law enforcement officer to help the Sheriff's Department, the Harnett County Fire Marshals. And what they were doing was, what we were doing was trying to narrow down that point of origin, exactly where that fire occurred at, because we, we needed to know that, and we can bring them in to, to assist with those types of investigations. We not only suppress fires here in Harnett, we are a statewide resource. Some of you may remember the Pilot Mountain Fire from this past December, the state park up there, one of the most visited state parks in North Carolina. But we also assisted in Surrey, Jones, Pender, Robinson, Duplin, and Brunswick County. That was your, your local Harnett County Forest Service assisted with fires in those counties in 2021. During the summertime, we, that, which is normally our downtime, we do allow our employees, we get requests from other areas of the country. The Forest Service staff here in Harnett took fire assignments in California, Washington, Oregon, and Montana last year to, to assist with the, the National Fire Plan, the, the national secretion of wildfires. We do logging inspections, of course, with the, with the timber, the logging prices up, we go out and we do inspections. There are certain environmental regulations that loggers have to abide by when they're working in the woods, a lot of it going to creek crossings and sediment getting into the creeks and stuff. We go out and do those inspections. Most of the loggers, a lot of the big companies, they actually notify us when they're logging on certain tracks in the county, because they want us to come out and make sure that they're doing it properly. And we did 53 inspections last year, which is, which is a little bit up, and that's because of the price of lumber. We assist the fire departments through a training program. We have chainsaw safety, some wildland classes. COVID, we kind of got shut down there in 2020, but in 2021, we certainly started back in the spring last year, teaching at some of the, the local fire departments. Managing our forest, one thing that we do a lot, we write the PUV program, plans for the county, for landowners who are in the PUV program. We like to say, this is what, forest rangers don't like to be stuck at their desk, but we do spend a lot of time writing these plans. We assisted 201 forest landowners in the county, prepared 101 of these PUV plans, and put an additional 4,800 acres under active forest management in the county. One thing that we did get last year, when we wrote, write these PUV plans for landowners, we were charging a $5 an acre fee. We were able to obtain some grant money through the Agriculture Disaster Recovery Program that waives that fee for the landowners here in the county, which, which is a good thing. That's, that's one less expense to, to those landowners. Forest establishment, last year, 2021, our planting season, we planted for 49 landowners, 50, a little over 1,500 acres. I look back in our records, I'm kind of a numbers guy, because I wanted to see Harnett County's growing rapidly, and I just kind of compared our tree planting over the years. And we'd normally plant between 1,200 to about 1,700 acres in trees a year. If you look at the last 20 years, and we were right in there with 1,500, even with the growth and the development that's occurring. Timber stand improvement, that's where we use some herbicides, or we do some pre-commercial thinning to help the trees grow. We had 16 landowner projects for about 500 acres. But if you take that 1,500 acres of trees and divide it by the number of trees we plant per acre, just about 800,000 new trees this past winter went into the ground. So it's gonna keep Harnett County green for, for a little while to come. With all that tree planting and the different landowners, we have certain cost share programs or grants that landowners can apply for. There are six different programs up there that they can apply for. Two of them are federal, four of them are state programs. And last year, there was about $176,000 worth of grants that we were able to get for Harnett County landowners. And I, I think that's a, a pretty, pretty good deal for, for the landowners. Of course, all that cost share paperwork keeps us in front of the computer, and I know that y'all, the county applies for a lot of grants and stuff, too, and it's just amazing, you know, go to line TMV, turn the paper sideways, you must sign with blue ink and date it. It's just amazing, all the, the dotting the i's and crossing the t's that you have to do to, to get that grant money. Here in Harnett County, we have a Forest Landowners Association. Of course, COVID shut us down for a little while, but we were able to bring that back this past February. We had a great meeting, we had about 40 landowners that came to it. We have our next meeting over at the Ag Building on May the 17th. So we're glad to get that, get that out and, and getting the landowners back together. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan Grant, we applied for this for the Anderson Creek Park. We've been very fortunate. Usually you apply for it, you get three years where the, where you have monies to pay for the burning. I'd got that grant two times in the past, so it's for six years. I was a little nervous last year when I applied for it, that, that we were gonna get knocked out, but we turned in all the paperwork, and when they looked at the, when the US Forest Service looked at this, this project, one thing that stood out to them was the growth and the development that's occurring around that park, and the number of houses that, that butt up against that park. And one thing, if we go out there and we burn it in a controlled environment, that lessens the chance of, of a wildfire. And last year, on May the 1st, we actually had a wildfire inside of Anderson Creek Park. It burnt 14 acres, but it really wasn't too bad, because one of the sides of the fire burnt right to a block that we had burnt in February. So that, that's grant money that's, that's earning its keep right there. It's done what it's supposed to. We've reduced the fuel load, the fire couldn't, couldn't grow anymore. So I'm glad to see that we got that grant back for another three years. This is always my, my Wood and Deal page. Last year, the Harnett County was, was nice enough to give us $130,000. I looked at all those cost share programs that we have for those landowners, and I don't know, I've been here for 20 years as the supervisor, and, and one of the things I like to see is if I can get enough grants back to the landowners of what the county spends, I just think that's, that's a good deal. So we, we were able to do that, that last year. I'm not the best IT person in the world, and I've reviewed this slideshow like five times, and then this morning at 7 o'clock, I noticed a mistake. It says, we are asking for less. That's what I get from taking part of the PowerPoint from last year and advancing it to this year. It should say more. It really should. But being at the office at 7 o'clock and no one there under the age of 30 to help me, I was, I was kind of, I was kind of caught. But in 2021, we asked for 130,000, and 2022, we're gonna ask for 152,000. So that is an increase of almost 22,000. Why is that? I think if you look at the picture of Preston up underneath his truck hood in the Ag parking lot, you can kind of probably see where, where this is, where this is going. We've, we're gonna need a new truck this year, and we call it an engine, because it's just like a fire department brush truck. And trucks are getting really expensive. I look back to my first year in '02, and the cost of a F-350 then, the whole cost was $20,000. This year is $38,000. They've increased tremendously. And if I break it down to, to that 21,000, 22,000, we're asking 15,200, because the way the county and the state splits it, it's 60/40, 60% state funded, 40% county. So 15,200 of that is that new pickup truck. Last year, the state legislators awarded a 5% pay raise, 2.5% last year, 2.5% this coming year, 40% of the fore employees' pay raise. The state health plan this year went up, so that's counting for $1,700. I think it was $1,000 per employee, the state health plan went up. And then also the retirement, the longevity, the social security, all of that goes up. That's what equaled that 21,000. There is nothing, we added nothing into our operating budget. That's where that 21,000 come from. Most of it is that 40% of that, that pickup truck. Again, we're split, we're kind of different than most state agencies. We're 60/40. The county does not give us that lump sum, 152,000. The state sends a bill every month to the county based on 40% of what, what we spend. So we have to have the state funds upfront, and then, then we ask the, the county for, for the reimbursement. Just on future needs, that, that pickup is a big thing. You know, when those other counties call at 7 o'clock at night needing resources, that's, that's the vehicle that the forest ranger gets into and goes. The truck we're getting rid of, we're taking out from a frontline truck to secondary, which means our operator will drive it, and what drives our bulldozer, he'll drive it till the wheels come, come off of that 2014 that we're replacing. But, and then eventually, we would like to get something to cover our, our bulldozer here in the county. And I think the state is starting to, to work on that. You got a half a million dollar piece of equipment sitting out in the rain, need, need to get a top over it. And with that, Smokey knows when it's time to go, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you and let you know what the Forest Service is, is doing in the county. come and speak to you and let you know what the Forest Service is doing in the county. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from anyone?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, at this time, call on Mr. Lockamy to come forward and give his economic development update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to give a quick shout out to my partner in crime, Reed Williams, at the I-95, I-40 Crossroads of America Alliance. I'm glad to see Reed here today, and also William Elmore, Mayor William Elmore, and Harold King. So we've got a strong economic development climate and organizations in our community and region, and they're one of them. And so I'm proud to work with them, glad you're here today. All right, so I'm here today really to give you an update on our economic development work plan. Our commissioners adopted this work plan one month and one week ago. And so we've got some strong initiatives in here, and probably front and center is the organizational restructuring report for Sanford-Holdhauser. We're about one month away from having a final draft on that and presentation to the board. And so while, you know, typically, I only get a little bit of time to present, you know, so we don't bog the meetings down too much, I will be setting up individual meetings with you to talk to you about a variety of different things, to show you some data as well, and also to discuss that. But we'll be bringing it forward soon, once we have a final draft. So that's knocking on our door, real close to it. New economic development website. The current website is about five to six years old. And so what we've done, that was an initiative, we've reached out and gotten three quotes, one from Acrosoft and one from ED Suite. Acrosoft is out of Charlotte, ED Suite is out of Texas, and one from K Ventures. K Ventures is the firm that works currently for Harnett County that already has a contract. After looking and talking with the consultants, I felt K Ventures, the firm that we currently have on retainer, was the best one to go with. I felt very comfortable with the principal, Jamie. I saw work that he's done, and I think it rivals Acrosoft and ED Suite to major players in the economic development website business. And so I felt confident that we could get a very strong product for Harnett County and flexibility as we move forward and establish our public-private partnership. And so there, you'll notice as well that their quote came in much lower than the other two groups. And also the variety of different marketing materials that we need to establish that deal with our target sectors, our real estate climate, our educational climate and so forth. I thought it was important that we use the company that does the website for design consistency to be able to do the marketing materials. And again, saw the same thing, that K Ventures came in lower than the other two. And so we had identified funds in our economic development budget to be able to navigate all these items, and so we were able to identify those funds and didn't have any problem doing it. And, excuse me, I've got to put my glasses on, I'm getting a little old, I think, in life. So drone photography, that was one of the things that we needed for our website and marketing material, and also just standard photography. And so we needed the ability to capture some new images of our business climate, some of our major employers, our educational institutions, our quality of life. And so reached out, got three quotes, and felt the best company to go with was the highest price, but not much higher than the second one. And that company is actually a Harnett County-based company out of Banjo, North Carolina, called Pinnacle Eye Productions. They do really good work. They said the right things, asked the right questions in relation to coordinating with the FAA, and they've already started for us and have provided some really good photography. So I'm happy with those guys. I think we've got a good product. And one thing that's on this slide that I want to mention is, is we've already started coordinating our labor shed analysis, where we basically look at a contiguous area for employment, the way commuters come and go through their journey to work. And so that's being handled for free through the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Dr. Jenny Harris. Okay? Just the other day, I showed our Economic Development Council some data in relation to the companies that are shopping through the state. And so target sector companies essentially reach out to the various economic development partnerships in the states or the Department of Commerce. And what they're looking for typically is land or buildings and incentives to be able to locate their business or expand. And so it's a very competitive process. We get those leads or RFIs through the state of North Carolina, and we get them on a regular basis. I would say, you know, on average, a couple a week or so come in. Crunching numbers recently, the other day, we had 50 that, over about a 15, over the last 15 months. Those RFIs are typically showing that about 92% of the companies want an existing available building to be able to expand into. The size that they're requesting, 65% of them are requesting a building between 100,000 and 350,000 square feet. That lines up with what I've seen in other markets as well. And so the sweet spot is around 100,000 to 150,000 square feet for attracting the types of companies that we're going for in economic development. These are the companies that dovetail with their educational climate, they're biotech companies and others, that tend to really, really bring strong financial results and strong outcomes to a community. Samet Corporation, in looking at buildings, we've looked at Samet, JM Thompson, and Agrocell, had conversations with all three of those companies. Samet is interested in exploring the I-95 corridor. JM Thompson really is not interested at this time, and Agrocell has not committed to exploring yet due to other commitments. As talks progress on a spec building, we will explore an RFP process, our various municipal partners to be able to bring in financial support for it, financials, and a formal commitment. And so just to let you know, the talks are ongoing. They've just really started within the last month, but forward progress and everything points to a favorable outcome and the ability to program a building if that's the wishes of the commissioners. Our shovel-ready efforts through our work plan. Sanford-Holdhauser is conducting two analysis for us right now, one with Edgerton Industrial Park, the remaining 44 acres. They've initiated the feasibility study, and so that's ongoing. And they've also initiated the update to the state certification. Okay. Identification of land for industrial expansion. This is probably one of the most, in addition to the spec building, this is the most important thing, one of the most important things we're going to be doing. We need to find a really good site or sites for our next business park. And so many of our RFIs prioritize highway accessibility and even state of desire to be within five to 10 miles of an interstate highway. This is in addition to the building specs that I mentioned earlier. Four-lane connectivity is extremely important. In my past research in communities I've worked for, when I've helped conduct this type of work and worked with consultants, that was really the driving factor. The four-lane highway was the anchor for the creation of any industrial land for being able to program a business park. We're very fortunate to have I-95. We have about a third of our nation's population along that corridor from Florida to Maine, 40% of the national GDP, and approximately a half a day's drive from Harnett County in either direction to cover all of those markets. That's a lot of customers, that's a lot of access to suppliers that we have. We also have a strong corridor that connects Fort Bragg with Sanford, that's NC-87. And that's another four-lane highway in our community. And then the other four-lane corridor is US 421 between Lillington and Irwin, proximity to educational institutions with Campbell and Central Carolina Community College and the regional jet port. All right. The route for future I-685, which is the Carolina Core Interstate Highway, has not been identified in Harnett County yet. It could follow the 421 corridor, but quite frankly, we're not sure. And so as far as this analysis, I think we focus on our current four-lane highways. As we get more information, we can always go out and maybe do a land banking situation along the corridor. But that's kind of what we've teed up so far, and that's, I think, pointing the commissioners in the right direction to give immediate wins and make a strategic decision. And I believe that as part of the business part, helping to identify a park, we assess the Western Harnett Industrial Park as well before we really consider identifying a new site on that corridor. That's going to be important, I believe. We may have a product we can work with, and we may not, but we need to look at that as part of that. Okay, and so within the next two weeks, we need to entertain at least three quotes from site selectors and consultants to help communities locate business parks. Items of importance are going to be the ability to achieve industrial zoning. Separation from residential areas, very important to make sure we get the right location and it's a good fit for the community. As few a property owners as possible. What I've seen is typically one, no more than two property owners in a situation. Been a part of one industrial park that fell apart in a combination of Pitt County and Martin County back in the day, it had 11 different property owners in it, and it didn't work. But what I've seen is typically, you know, the fewer the property owners, the better. Limited to no environmental factors, think about floodplain, wetlands, so that's always a factor. Utilities, the ability to serve from water, wastewater, broadband, you know, natural gas, power. And 100 acres or more. This compares to our current regional parks. The East Coast Logistics Park on I-95 is 138 acres. The biotech park over in Mooresville called Spark LS, which stands for life science, is 110 acres. The park over in Holly Springs is just a little north of about 120 acres. And so that, you know, I think that's a good benchmark, that's where we start. Good ingress and egress for highway exits. Topography, making sure that, and easements. And so making sure that the cost of development doesn't put us out of the game, meaning that it would increase the price per acreage on the other end of it to make it where it's outside of the market. Title search, to understand all of the unknowns, archaeological, variety of different factors, that's always important, and other factors recommended by a site consultant. And I think we need to stay the course. Whenever we launch an effort like this, the community knows that this is going on. And so I think it's important that we stay the course. We entertain the industrial parks through the system that we're going through. We've teed up a very fast timeline for you. Again, we're one month and one week into our effort, and so I think we have the ability to be able to vet these in a quick timeline, and we see it through. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Lockamy? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Williams. Glad to have you today.
Thank you, Chairman and Board, for the opportunity to be here today. I'm going to introduce my guest with me, and then I'll turn it over to our Chairman. So first, we've got our Board Chairman, Mr. Harold King, who will address the Board here in a few seconds, and then as well, Mayor Elmore from the City of Dunn. And I appreciate, we've got a great Board. I brag on them any chance we get. We've really got a rock star team, and thank you, Christian, for the kind words. You know, economic developers say it's a team sport, and it takes kind of everybody, municipalities, counties, private partners, Duke Energy, to be successful. So we appreciate the partnership from you all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Harold King. My day job is President of KS Van Corp over in Smithfield, North Carolina, the holding company for KS Van. Somehow, my part-time job now has become the I-95, I-40 Economic Development Alliance, a mouthful. But we simply wanted to introduce ourselves and try to say what our goals are for this whole thing. As you know, I-95 is a tremendous corridor running through Harnett County, and also I live in Johnston County, and the towns along that interstate just have not enjoyed the economic standard of living maybe that we would all hope for them to be. And so in putting together the towns of Four Oaks, Benson, and Dunn along that corridor, we simply wanted to recruit jobs that are above the average income levels. We wanted to create an environment that would allow our young folks to grow up and not have to drive out of the county to get employment. I don't know how many leave Harnett County every day, but a ton do, we know that. Economic Development Director over in Johnston County, Chris Johnson, has been saying for a couple of years now that 55,000 people get up and leave Johnston County every day for those quality jobs. And that's just a whole lot of folks on the highway. And so our goal is to create quality jobs along this I-95 corridor. So it is a regional effort. We find that regional efforts now are being much more successful all across the southeast, but certainly across North Carolina. And, you know, my wife gives me a hard time because I always say it's all about the money, and she says, "Yeah, but you're a banker, and that's why you say that." But it is, you know, it takes money to facilitate things, and economic development growth requires lots of investment. And so it has to be a regional effort, it has to be a partnership. And we think we can be more successful in getting some of that funds from outside our area by doing it as a regional partnership. The alliance is a 501(c)(3), its voting members are appointed by the towns, and we have quality people on that, and we're excited about the opportunities to go. Reed's not going to come and make an announcement to you this morning, but I can assure you that there are lots of things in the works. And so it's exciting, it's exciting times. I believe it's important for the state. You know, we've had a lot of discussions about how do you help the rural areas of North Carolina. The sad thing is, you just can't co-convince Company A to move to Salemburg, for instance, down in our sister county. It's not going to happen. But if we create quality jobs here in the northeastern part of Harnett County, that means somebody can live in Salemburg and have a decent commute to get their job. So over a period of time, that economic growth can get spread across the rural areas of our county. So it's incumbent upon us to do that and to do it correctly. I always joke that I hope my grandchildren don't wake up one day and say, "What in the Hades was Popeye and his buddies thinking?" You know, the men and women that I work with every day want to leave this place a little bit better than we found it, and I feel a tremendous commitment to do that. So we look forward to being back in front of you in future times. We look forward to asking for your cooperation and help. I think it takes all of us, and I'm excited about the possibilities. So Mayor Elmore, I never pass up letting a politician want me to speak if he wants to. I know you've got some comments, so come.
Thank you, Mr. King.
I'd just like to say thank you to this Board for the working together with the City of Dunn over the past, since you all have come into office, we've seen a lot of changes and a lot of things that are going good across the county, and for that, we're very thankful. We're thankful for the County Board seeing the need to hire an economic developer. Christian, thank you so much for what you're doing. We see him all over the county as we travel about, he's out working and doing good things for the county. We look forward through our alliance to working closer with the county so that we can do things that benefit us all. I'm a firm believer that what happens in Dunn and Irwin and Coates and Andrew is good for the county, the same as what happens in Western Harnett is good for all of us as well. And I'm a firm believer that what's good for our neighbors is also good for us as well. So we have a great partnership with Johnston County and have a great partnership with you all, and I thank you for the things that you do. Glad to have our new county manager in place now, and look forward to working with him as well. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for Mr. Williams, or Mr. King, or Mayor Elmore? Well, thank y'all for being here today, appreciate it. All right, Mr. Trout, the county manager's report.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. You have your reports in the packet regarding the information, mainly the DSS report. The other thing that I have is that mentioned that our Human Resources Director position is out on the street, if anyone is interested in the position. We have other positions that are open, so Harnett County is hiring. Please go to harnett.org and take a look at that if you're. Please go to harnett.org and take a look at that if you're looking for a position. Be happy to entertain your, your applicants, is all I have to say.
All right. Anyone have anything else to bring before the Board today? If not, I'll enter, we don't have need for, have no need for a closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Please.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.